All right. Well, the time is 6:01 PM. I'm calling to order a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, September 19th, 2023. Just as a note, council, after we do public comments, we'll go right into the budget before we do any consent items. We have to pass the budget before we can pass certain consent items. And as part of public comments, I just also want to point out that there's a number of open gov statements all related to one of the bring back discussion items for the budget. I think they're all related to the pickleball suggestion and some feedback that if you haven't had a chance to read through, you know, please do so as you can during the meeting. There are 12 registered statements in open gov. So with that, I'll take us to agenda item number two, which is public comments for anybody who wishes to speak at this time. And we'll also have a chance to speak during specific agenda items if people want to reserve their comments for those. Okay? Moving right on, we'll go to agenda item number three, which is consider an act on approval of the proposed budget for fiscal year 2023 and 2024. So council, thank you for all your input into this process and staff for all the hard work in getting the budget prepared this year. It certainly is a lengthy process, but also one that, you know, involves an open and transparent process too, I should say, just in terms of making sure that we get input from the various committees and the community members and the council as well. So I think what we'll do as far as, you know, helpful, you know, items is that we did capture a number of bring back items, which is part of the backup. I think the seat administrator has also added one additional item. I think that was not in part of the backup that we'll go over. Matt, do you want to go ahead and give an overview of this item? And then we'll jump right into questions from council or to the backup items as far as the bring back.
Certainly. There's actually two additional items, and one has been discussed at length, but actually both of these are kind of bring back items from this fiscal year. So in fiscal year 23, we had earmarked 50,000 in the committed parks, open space, beautification funds specifically for street trail signage, wayfinding signage. Over a year ago, you know, we engaged the community and got a lot of responses on votes for street sign designs. And that process has been moving, moving slowly, but the most popular design it's turning out is not going to be perhaps feasible design, so we may have to move to design number two. Regardless, we want to move forward with that project. The P and E committee recommended to continue to fund the 50,000 for-street trail and wayfinding signage. That money was a part of the overall parks, open space, and beautification committed funds. In preparing the fiscal year 24 budget, all of the, all funds remaining in that balance were used to fund phase one of the Upper Cougar Creek. So we still have, just, this is just a good number to keep in mind as we're working through this. For the general fund, FY24 budget, the proposed budget we're adopting tonight, hopefully, has 541,826 in surplus revenue. So 541,000 has not been allocated to anything yet. So that is really what we're working with, with the general fund when we're working on this spreadsheet, if that makes sense. So the 50,000 would come out of that since the remaining balance of that parks and open space committed funds has been used for phase one of Upper Cougar Creek. The other one is kind of to pair with the, the street, trail, and wayfinding signage. Oh, and one additional item, we also would look at to help supplement that using the hot funds to pay for some of the wave, like if it qualifies as wayfinding, using some of our, because we have plenty of hot funds to use along with the, the street and the trail signs. So, and we can always come back with a, with a budget amendment to pull from hot fund reserves or fund balance, I should say. The, also what we want to do is go ahead and move, right now, the American, the $40,000 left from the American Rescue Funds, CED Arts Commission, all put, gave input on, there was a, a design from Canalis that they liked for the monument signs. So we want to go ahead and, and move that money. Right now, it's still sitting and committed, so we want to go ahead and move that into the budget so we can move forward with that project. So that is not, that will not affect that $541,000 balance I talked about. That will just move the 40,000 from committed into an actual budgeted line item. And that, again, that is from the American Rescue Plan Funds we got back in 2021. So those are the two additional items that were not in the backup that you all received. And just one more note, so this is, this is how we did it last year. So when an item was approved, you know, it was highlighted in the screen color. This $100,000, it's not in the actual budget yet, but council, you all did approve this when you approved the expansion of the water conservation rebate program at the last meeting. And that was to go ahead and move 100,000 from the million dollars of committed funds into this year's budget or FY24's budget. Yes?
Can you make that just a little bit bigger?
I sure can. Sorry about that.
And council, just as a reminder, the, the budget that we saw at our last meeting is sort of the baseline, and it hasn't changed. These are changes that we could make, and then they would be incorporated into the final budget. We would approve with these changes or some of these changes. And then the final budget would be adopted and reconciled with these changes. Some of them will come, you know, change the, potentially change the revenue number, some of them will change the, the general fund balance, things like that. But the budget, you know, if, we could pass the budget just as it is without any additional items, but, you know, since these were brought as bring back items, we want to make sure that it reflected everything that we had input from council. And so I think we could just go through each of these one by one and, and get some feedback, just for discussion, then, you know, go through. And when we make a motion, the motion could include numbers saying, and item number one, two, et cetera, for the, the actual adoption of the budget. So just to start out with what I wanted to clarify, make sure this clear, that, we'll go through them and just kind of talk through them. But the reduction in sales tax revenue, Councilor Reitz, you proposed this, and that's, I think there was a discrepancy in terms of like how we view sales tax revenue versus what our total revenue from sales taxes in our reports versus the budget. So the surplus that we're anticipating is based on the combined revenue from the current control and projection district as well as our regular sources of sales tax revenue. And so that's where we come up with the revenue surplus.
Correct.
The target that we have in our, this budget is the $7.2 million, which is essentially what we made in combined, in, in sales tax without the current control and bridge region district this year. Councilor Reitz?
Yeah, I am okay to withdraw that. You guys have access to the actual store information that we do not have access to, so I trust that y'all have done your due diligence with the stores that have been closing, et cetera. I do have concerns about the economy coming up, but we did have a record year, and so that's something to be celebrated. So I think we'll continue to do well for a while, but I think it will start declining a bit, so.
Okay. All right. And maybe we can have, go through this and the person who sponsored it or asked for, we can have them speak to it, and then if you're, you know, willing to withdraw it. So that one, we're, we'll go ahead and remove unless anybody feels strongly that we want to keep it. And number one, which is the reducing the revenue projection by 100,000.
No. Yeah. Mayor, would you like me to just strike through?
Yeah, go ahead and strike through them as we go through so that we can remember where we're at. Okay. Okay. So number two, we did take action on this last time. We just need to make sure that we include this as part of, well, as part of the budget adoption motion.
And it, it will come out of the committed funds, but actually go to the utility fund because that is where we, that's where we account for water conservation. So it'll be a, it'll be moving it out of committed funds and then transferred to the utility fund.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion on number two?
Yes. That was set aside previously. So 100,000 is being moved over to increase the water conservation rebates, so we'll now have 900,000 left.
900,000, correct. And if, let's say, one of the shopping centers wants to move forward with, you know, a large program, we could always come back and do a budget, budget adjustment later in the year.
Okay. Any further comments on number two? All right. Item number three, Councilor Young, I believe this is your initial item. Do you want to speak to this one?
Yeah, just very quickly. Along the Valley Creek Trail, coming out of Valley Creek Part, there is an area that's a small clearing that Austin residents who are very, live there, basically use. And I had raised a concern because there was a fire ring there with a bunch of firewood piled on it that I believe was in Sunset Valley area. And I went to Public Works, told them about it, asked if they could talk to the resident. It's unclear, I think, or else we have an old survey that shows where the property lines are between Sunset Valley and, and the residence. And it's been proposed potentially to build a fence there. I don't know that that's necessary, but I think, I think we need to be very clear on where Sunset Valley ends and Austin begins in that particular area. I don't have a problem with the Austin residents using it. I do have a problem with them piling up firewood there, especially which is, you know, this was when we were in a severe drought and may go back to one. So I thought that was a public safety hazard. I don't know that we want to take any other action on this. And Carolyn, I, I think your folks talked to these folks.
Yeah, well, we've talked to them quite a bit. So we're, we're going to work with them to get everything removed. I do believe that little section is not likely on the city's property, so we'll kind of clarify that. But instead of building a fence or doing anything like that, I'd rather work with those residents over there, because they also happen to be our access point for us to come through. So we'd rather, you know, work neighborly with them and make this a safe space for, from our perspective, and still not, like, block off access completely.
Yes. And I, I think it just, we just need to have a clarity about what's Sunset Valley and what's Austin.
Yeah.
Right? So we don't have any, any future disputes about that.
Yeah. Yeah, we can definitely work with, we'll work with them on that.
Okay.
So with this, it sounds like this is maybe bringing back as a council update or action rather than having it as a budget item to fund.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, let's, let's bring it back.
Okay. Councilor Rosengarten?
Yes, I had some questions on the math, okay? So on the math, we have the external revenues at 98,59720, so 9,859,720. We then have the expenses at 13, the revenues with transfers is 14,886,821. Then we have expenses without transfers at 9,859,720. And we have expenses with transfers at 13,524,141, leaving us a difference of 1,362,679. That's per our budget. So if we are, we are, our revenues are with transfers at 14 million, our expenses with transfers are at 13 million, and we have 1 million left over. And then our surplus from our budget is for 2024.
So for 2024, that, that 541,000, that is in the general fund?
That's only the general.
Only in the general fund, correct.
So the 1 million is all funds?
Yeah, the 1.3 million is across all funds.
So 541. Now, the 2223 surplus is 550,000.
We're estimating to be 550.
Correct. Estimated.
And that is also general. We're only talking about general fund with that estimate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions on item number three? Or item number, yeah, number three. Councilor Reitz?
So, okay, we're just striking that. Okay.
Yeah, we're going to be following up with staff bringing back more information as far as making sure that the residents and the city are working through that, any issues, and making sure we also understand where the property line is for the city. Okay. Item number four, Jones Road, Southside, Lone Oak to Pillow Sidewalk. This is actually an item that I brought up with staff, and I think I talked about it at the last council meeting perhaps, but it's a proposal as part of the work that's being done either combined with one of our projects, but also just because we're looking at building a trail in front of Public Works to redirect routes, you know, folks who are accessing this area here from going into the garage space to have them go in front of buildings. That trail will end at, at Lone Oak. And then across Lone Oak, there is, there's just grass, right? There's, for the, the two houses that are along Jones Road there. We've had discussions in the city as a pass to build a trail or sidewalk along that, that side of the, the south side of Jones to match the sidewalk that's also on the south side of Jones, starting at Pillow. And so what I would like to do is next year, as part of our, one of our construction projects, is to actually create a trail or sidewalk that matches the sidewalk that's existing on the remainder of Jones Road in that section, primarily because there'll already be, you know, people who access it from the city hall complex who can, are, people use it right now, right? That's kind of the, the basic, you know, of it is that I see people walking along that section of the road, trampling over the grass, you know, trying to, you know, find a navigable route. It would be nice if we just had a contiguous sidewalk there. So my proposal is that we add some funds for that, if council is amiable to that. I think Carolyn, you proposed potentially combining this with some of the other work that's going on that we have planned for the fiscal year, so this would be considered like an add-on to those projects, but if you wanted to give council any more information about that.
Yeah, I think we're proposing to make it like an add alternate to the UCC Savannah Trail Project, Home Depot Boulevard Project, and have it just on there so that council then can make a decision once we get those numbers in on funding for that project. We'll know the actual numbers for construction at that point.
And it just, for me, I think it's a, it, it's important to have the access there if people are already using it, but also if we're building a trail that's going to redirect people. There is not a crosswalk at Jones, at the city hall complex right there. You'd have to actually back up and go to the crosswalk that's by the police department. We, just personally, I use that spot and have to cross Jones, and I'd rather be on the south side to go to the crosswalk where it's safe at Pillow. So it's, for me, it's, it's important to have that, but it's also, you know, a new project that hasn't been considered by the Public Works, or the, you know, Public Works/ Budget Finance Group as well. Councilor Rosengarten?
Carolyn, we had discussed the south side sidewalk for years and then finally put it in between Pillow over to West Gate. Why wasn't that strip done? Because I remember when it was done, it was like, why did we?
I, I don't know, but maybe Melissa may have an answer for that. I don't know why that was never done. Because I, yeah, I have the same question.
Melissa Gonzalez, 26 trees. My memory of that was that the residents, which I don't think were the same residents at the time, said that we didn't need to do it because we were doing the crosswalk. So there was, I think, some resident pushback, and we just didn't, the way we, the way we tend to, if there's a lot of pushback, people tend to not do it. And that's my memory of it. It could be faulty, but that was my memory of why it didn't happen.
So do we?
I don't think it's the same residents.
Got it. So do we know if the residents that are there now have any pushback?
Yeah, Matt, so, one of them is, all right, one has a giant fence around the property now, so a privacy fence, and I can definitely reach out to the other. I don't think they would necessarily be completely opposed to something like that.
Because that's why some of the other folks on Jones, on the south side, if you will, didn't want a sidewalk because they didn't want people purposely walking in front of their property.
Right.
So, okay. Thank you.
And I, I was actually one of those people, but, so it was, yeah, it was originally Mr. Lucas who didn't want it, and then I didn't want it, but then I worked with, worked with the staff, and they were like, we'll make it, we'll make it really nice. And so they actually put in the fence that we have there, and that, like, gave enough of a buffer. So, good job. And I, I think over there, on our property, the, the right-of-way was smaller. Like, the fences up here seem to be back way farther than ours.
Yeah, we did a couple easements along the edges there because I don't know if the right-of-way was smaller or what was going on, but we did a couple easements to, like, on your property, I think, and on the property across the street as well, just to make sure that we could, one, move on the one side of the fence, remove the fence, because there used to be a fence there, that.
Oh, right.
And so we removed the, we, we worked with that resident to remove the fence because it was really just really hard for people to see around the corner there.
Yeah, it was, no, no, it wasn't a fence, they had, they really tall trees.
It was a hedge. It was a giant hedge, yeah. It was a giant hedge, yeah. And so we worked with them to remove that, and so there was, yeah, there was quite a bit of easement. This one, I think, was wide enough where I don't think we're going to have that issue, so.
Yeah. That fence that the, that the city put in was four grand, so 60, I mean, ain't no way. Because, not that you're going to build a fence, but a concrete or whatever, I think it's going to be more than that.
Melissa Gonzalez, 26 trees. I would suggest that we do the same thing that we did at Rob's house because there are, there has been a fairly large dog that comes right up to the fence. And so having, if we're going to do it, I think we should offer to do for, for two reasons. What, because it's nice and looks good, but we did it at, at council member Johnson's house and put a wooden fence there because of the dog feature. That's why I also haven't pushed for it, because at the time, there was a really loud barking dog that would make me cross the street even though I was really lazy and didn't want to. So those, those are, those are just a factor that sometimes when we know there's going to be a dog there, we should consider a fence.
Councilor Young?
Yeah, a question. Are we proposing building a sidewalk there or a trail?
I would think it would be the, I think, the, well, that's a great question because on the north side of Jones is trail with granite gravel and concrete edges, and I think on the south side, we have mostly sidewalk. So it could be either way. It could be sidewalk and/or trail, whichever council would prefer.
Speaking strictly for myself, I'd love a trail because I'd rather run on that side of the street than have to cross and run on the other side of the street. But that's just me. I do agree with Councilor Mel Rosengarten that we should check in with the residents who would be affected by this before going any further.
So I, I would maybe look at putting about 30,000 in the budget right now for, like, planning and doing design work and things like that, of course, working with residents, seeing if we're going to need, if they want to build kind of a fence similar to what we built over at your location. And then as far as construction goes, then it would be an add alternate onto those other projects.
Yeah. I'm not objecting to allocating the money for it right now, but I think we should, we should talk to the residents as well.
Yes.
I think, I think the, I think it was concrete down on our end because a lot of those properties kind of slope off immediately, and then it's actually flatter here.
Yeah, it is.
And then we had, we had the crushed granite in, like, critical root zones for some of the, like, the cedar elements between us and Mrs. Lucas, even though I don't know how pervasive that is anyway, but, yeah.
So council, we, we could have the option of putting money aside for this or bringing it back as a potential item to look at in, once we've had more, you know, feedback from the staff investigation, but let's.
Let's just go down the whole list and then from there.
Yeah, let's keep going down, but we'll keep, we won't strike this one, we'll keep it on there for now, and then depending on how the discussion goes, we can either include or not. Item number five is uplands and pickleball planning. So it started, I think, with Councilor Reitz suggesting the pickleball court at the end of Master Sergeant Horgan, and then I think Karen, you mentioned also trying to do combined uplands planning. So this one, just in terms of my, you know, with what the, the column E is saying, so my, my discussion with staff is that, you know, we are taking a lot of projects on, especially the fall this year, right? You know, so we're going to be doing a lot of planning, a lot of work with stakeholders, Reimagine Brody, you know, the 6107 is also going to be kicking off. My concern is that I don't want this to be a short, you know, given the short shrift in terms of like its attention and, and the staff time. So my concerns are really more about workload than budget or being able to proceed with it. That's the consideration that I, my recommendations coming from in this regards. However, you know, there's obviously a lot of interest, you know, from the community and some sort of amenities. I know that the uplands open space plan includes amenities like the, the empathy or the, you know, the pavilion and, and those features, which could be combined with something like, you know, pickleball, you know, courts and, and those kind of things. But it is a new project that would be adding on to a substantial set of projects that we have for this next year. You know, so just keep that in mind as we go through, you know, what we're, what we're approving and what we're authorizing for staff to work on. So, Councilor Reitz, you want to start with the discussion on this one?
Yes. First of all, I did not intend the pickleball court to be included with the uplands planning. The uplands has been controversial for, how many years? Many, many, many years. And, and I think that that will take, that is a very long process. It's a very complicated process. A pickleball court is not near as complicated. It is something, you know, I sent out two emails, and that was all I did. And, and we got a fairly healthy response from just two emails. I do believe there is great interest. I was, I had suggested this for the, is it 6107 Brody? But I was told there's a sinkhole, can't do it, but we can put a parking lot there. So I'm not sure how that worked, but, okay. I do think that our residents. I do think that our residents would really enjoy this, and we don't have anything that is close as far as a competitive type of sport that we offer. We have trails, but we don't have anything that's a competitive sport. We don't have soccer fields, we don't have ball fields, et cetera. And there are a lot of residents, there are seniors, there are families that I think would really, really use it a lot. Now, I know there's some issues with right-of-way. Maybe you can go through that, Matt, or maybe Jerry, and what are the concerns with that?
And I guess too, just to your point, councilmember, because I know your intention was not, you weren't discussing, your idea was not discussing the uplands parcel.
That's correct.
Which is this parcel here, but kind of made a joke with staff earlier today that I'm kind of calling this, which includes the triangle, the uplands parcel here and this, you know, very north end of, we'll call it the greater uplands area. So, because really, you know, we've got two city-owned parcels and we've got a right-of-way. Currently, it's a dead-end right-of-way, right?
Right.
But, you know, I know in discussions with staff and, and with the current, the current plan that's in the Parks and Open Space Plan, again, that's not a concrete plan, it's just a conceptual plan, I think the idea would be to abandon or vacate this section of the road to combine it, so it's, you know, so it's, potentially it could be one parcel. That's one, that is one idea, right? Because right, as it stands right now, I did check in with Darren, it's not, it's not illegal per se, it is, this, we as a municipality of general law city do have authority over our right-of-ways, but...
Okay.
But I think in talking with Jerry and from a planning perspective, it's not a good idea to put a park and/or recreational facility on a right-of-way. I think if we wanted to go down that road, we would need to vacate the road, we would need to declare, okay, this is no longer a road, we're going to use this as a, as a recreational facility. And then we can add, then we can properly vet the site, make sure that, you know, the ground is, it's safe and even, we can get fencing up so that there's not, you know, balls going into the highway, you know? Just make sure that we have adequate facilities for a, for, for a court.
Right. I don't, I think that is the way to proceed where we do vacate that. I don't know if you could do it as a separate piece versus tying it with the triangle or tying it with the uplands or make it its own separate piece. I don't know if that's possible, but you might want to look at that.
Typically, I believe, yeah, I believe typically when you, when you vacate, it would, it would go to, it would go to both parcels, right? So if we vacated that section, you know, half of it would go to the uplands parcel, the other half would go to the, the triangle. Check me if I'm wrong.
Yes, the, when you vacate right-of-way, usually you have private owners on the other side, and so they receive, you know, half and half. In this case, since the city owns both sides, you know, I don't think that that would be an issue, it would just simply be the city. But I do agree with Matt, you know, right-of-way is right-of-way, it's for the conveyance of utilities, the conveyance of people, you know, through cars, bikes, pedestrian, whatever. And this would really be a parkland use, you know what I mean? So I would not think that using right-of-way for parkland use is appropriate. I do think that there is probably, you know, I've heard a lot about the uplands since I've been here and planning for the uplands. I also agree with Matt that it'd probably be a good idea to consider the uplands and the triangle at the same time whenever we do have the discussion about the uplands, and I would be concerned about bisecting them right now. I also think that the road is sixty feet wide and has a crown in it for drainage, you know, which means, you know, it's, it's highest at the center and it goes the other way, so. I don't know, and I'm not a pickleball expert, far from it. I do understand, you know, the recreational opportunity, the popularity of the sport right now. I don't know, though, if it would be usable as it exists today for pickleball or if it requires some, you know, regrading and resurfacing to make it flatter, softer, you know, whatever, whatever the need may be.
It would. Yeah, and that's why I allocate, that's why I was allocating some money. So, and I do want to point out, there was, the pushback that I'm hearing is on a couple of things. One is, is that it hasn't gone through budget and finance. Well, most of these projects haven't gone through budget and finance. Mr. Cowan was incorrect in his statement that everything always goes through budget and finance. It does not. In my four years as a council member, we have always been able to bring up projects and they've always been considered. So this is the normal process that we are following. And second of all, the other thing is that it's, wasn't included as it needs more community involvement. I would suggest that this budget process is community involvement. We have twelve people that have already expressed opinions on it, which is probably the size of a lot of our meetings. And so I think there's some interest and it should be looked at. And I think those are, you know, you've heard my other arguments, so those are my arguments. I think it's, if it's not doable on your, on staff time, which would be, you know, interesting even at the, after the planning session in the fall, but maybe even in the winter, so, but, thanks.
Councilor Johnson?
Sure, thank you. So I think I said the last meeting, I never thought in a million years this would come up, but the company I work for, we play soccer in kind of like spaces where you wouldn't normally see soccer being played. As for soccer, like no conflict of interest here because there's not enough ball, ball retention here, like that ball would go into two ninety, so, but I, I think it's a perfect place to put pickleball courts. And honestly, I think maybe we're thinking a little bit too big here. I think if you brought people over that are big into the community, and the thing is like I, we fight mostly in New York and Los Angeles for space against pickleballers. So it's just like, if there is some space that has like, that is a good surface, people will want to play there. And I'm actually surprised that we've never seen people out there before because we, we will throw these kind of like rubber lines out, like dash lines around. I think we should get some organization that does pickleball around, have them look at it and say, would you play here? And if they're like, sure, we can, we could put down some lines and that's it. It's just like, you can play here. I, I don't think it needs to be anything bigger than that. We could even say, you can paint your own lines and we, it's all the way, it's a dead end, and if we put up literally one sign that says, "Not for use Sunday, nine to one P.M." because that's when the farmer's market is there. Besides that, we don't really care. We don't, we're not really even allowed to open up the end of that road, so it's not really a throughway or anything else. I, I do have concerns about if, not that we don't, not that we're inviting, but if we just say, you can, is there a liability issue? I mean, we have trails.
Excellent, excellent question.
But we have trails, and, I mean, I have fallen on those trails, and at no point did I ever say, I'm going to sue the city for whatever. So that would be my, my concern, but maybe that's just another liability sign that just goes up, or another sign. Sixty-one oh seven, I, is it, has it been torn down now? It is? Okay.
It's gone.
Did they leave the foundation?
No.
That's all gone.
Oh, I'm sorry. What I saw was all gone.
Even the foundation?
Yeah, it's the foundation, everything is gone because it was an elevated surface and they took it out.
Yeah.
And it was pure and clean.
That's a pretty good price then, because that is a mess. Okay, so sorry. I, I thought they were going to leave the foundation there, but so much for that, cross that off the list. Again, I, I think the, the thing that people that want to play pickleball want is just space where they're not going to get run off as soon as they kind of set up their, their nets. These people will have their own nets, their own equipment, as long as they back off, you know, twenty-five yards from, from two ninety, I don't think there's going to be an issue with the balls flying into the, we don't need to put up anything for ball retention. They just need lines and kind of like the reassurance that the police aren't going to show up and just say, get out of here, you kids. And if it, I mean, if it, if it worked out really well, I could see maybe a incredibly simple shelter, just so that if they're playing during the day, you can just like sit on a bench under, and I would use that during the farmer's market anyway. And, I don't know, I don't think it has to be, has to be that big. I think that is the end of my, so I'm in favor of it if we can do it for cheap, otherwise, yeah, probably push it off a bit, that's it.
Karen?
Oh, so, can you bring up the map of the uplands again? So this is part of the uplands. The uplands is both of those pieces of property, even though we call one, we tend to call it either Farmer's Park or the Triangle, but that's basically the uplands, both of those pieces of property, and that would intersect right in the middle of that. And we already have this as part of the considerations for the uplands for this property in the Parks and Open Space Plan, and, and that plan did involve robust community engagement. And we even have, so on pages forty-four and eighty-seven of that plan is the idea of the pickleball being included when we look at the overall planning for there. And then there's also the add-on amount that actually has some budget numbers in it on page eighty-seven of that for pickleballs and alternative. So it's, this isn't a new idea, it's something that the community has been engaged about. We have heard that it's of interest, but I really believe it needs to be considered as part of the entire project for that area versus taking a piece of that area and doing something there and then going back and what is our big plan going to be? We already have several projects on the planning stage for twenty-four, and when we, when council adopted the Parks and Open Space Plan, we said that for every project on this plan, we would, before we did anything, we would give it thoughtful consideration and we would bring it back with planning for, and more community engagement before we actually did anything. And I think we need to hold ourselves to that standard, rather than chopping things up and just throwing a pickleball court in the middle of it. So I really would like to see it planned. I think it's, there's good opportunities for pickleball to be included here. I don't know if that road is, at the end of the road is, is the best place. One of the suggestions that came out of the community engagement process was to actually mark the pavilion floor so that that could be used as pickleball courts with a retractable net when it wasn't being used for the farmer's market or other purposes, and that makes a lot of sense to me. But that is a recommendation that we got from the community. I'm not against pickleball, let's look at it, but let's look at it in a thoughtful and meaningful way and look at it as a whole project. Yes, this has been a long time, it's been controversial for whatever reason, because some people wanted it to be commercial, but now it's included in our Parks and Open Space Plan. After fifteen years of back and forth and two feasibility studies, I think it's time for us to look at this in 2025.
And then Councilor Young?
I think Horgan Trail would be a great curling center. Thank you.
What about the parking?
How long did you work on that?
The whole time she was talking, I was thinking.
Councilor Young?
I want to echo Councilmember Menakis's remarks about, about the process for this. We went through a long and in my opinion, very good process to reach a consensus about what we're going to do with the Parks and Open Space Plan. And part of that was indeed that we talked about having pickleball, probably putting in the uplands on a pavilion. When you go back and look at the survey that we did for the Parks and Open Space Plan, one hundred and forty people participated or more. There was strong support for nature-based recreation, trails, nature play, that kind of thing. Strong support for, you know, improving our system-wide amenities, lighting, trash, those kind of things. A lot less support for creating opportunities for outdoor fitness. Seventy percent support for nature-based recreation. About forty-five percent support or less for creating opportunities for outdoor fitness and for outdoor leisure. So based on that, one hundred and forty responses, I don't think there is a wide community consensus for this kind of thing. Now, I'm not against it, but I think it should be part of, as Councilmember Menakis said, our plan for the uplands. Putting that right there in the uplands disrupts what plan we have in there for right now, and that's all going to have to be done again. In addition, and I have a question for staff on this, changing that from right-of-way to parkland, does that require a zoning change?
Councilmember, it would. First, you'd have to vacate the right-of-way and then you could rezone it.
So it has to go in front of the zoning commission?
Yes.
Okay. Then we have to, it, it doesn't sound like it's an easy project to me, if you have to regrade the road, you have to do all these other things. I wonder about whether that's a good location, really, right next to two ninety, and I think that needs to be looked at a lot more. So I think we need to look at this in a lot more depth and, and, and put it into the big picture of where it should go. I don't think that, to me frankly, this is a little disrespectful of this whole process that we went through, and it's disrespectful to all the people who put all the work in this to do this. And I think, I think we should rethink this a little.
Councilor Johnson and then Councilmember Rees.
I, I have, I have a picture here, I don't know what the proper way to, to show a picture. I can just turn my laptop and then, is this, Teams a tan? Teams is so great, I don't think it's running right now. So what I'm going to say again here is, I think we can think small, if, if, first of all, that says TBD for the amount of money. I'd like to know like what, what the idea even is. I think you could have two courts there for two hundred and fifty dollars in marking spray and like one of those like little roller things. I'm not even sure this, to begin should be part of like budget discussion. It should almost be like a, bring it back as a, as an agenda item to say, hey, should we allow pickleball down here at the end of, until when we need to use it for, you know, development of the uplands? If, if that said, build a pickleball stadium, I'd be like, no, we're not going to do that. But it, it's just, it just says, hey, let's throw a couple courts down. I bet if we agreed to, I'm trying to get it here for you, buddy, maybe this image isn't so, isn't so important, but it's just the spirit of, the spirit of what people are looking for when they're looking to play sports in an urban environment. Teams, man. I'm just going to show it here and I'll send it to you. This is a picture of us playing soccer right at the Palmer Land Center.
Yep, well, that's fun.
Full rubber lines, we didn't have to like mark it up or anything, and they said, yeah, we'll do it, go ahead and play. Like we have a softball lesson or something, and we went out of here, and we did. We went up and we played and it was great, everyone had a great time, it was a good photo op. I think you could throw two courts down there, far enough away that the ball doesn't go into two ninety, and people will come and they'll play, and again, I don't even think it needs to be an agenda item besides the five hundred dollars in spray paint that we might line with. Again, my only question is liability and whether people would be okay with us marking up the streets, or I guess with the car on the street. I don't know who the streets are. Sorry, that's it.
Councilmember Rees?
First of all, I would like to address the disrespectful comment. I do not believe this is a disrespect to the plan, the planning committee that went into our Parks and Open Space planning. Horgan Trail, the end of Horgan Trail was not ever even looked at as an open space or a park. So this is a unique idea, and I am really disappointed with the naysayers. You know, what, what I'm hearing is, do you want to lump it with a three million dollar project? You know, this will be millions, and this shouldn't be. This is a simple project that would add value to our city, and I'm very disappointed that, of the naysayers that can't see the value and at least would like to look at it and, and make some headway toward it. Regarding the uplands, at some point, you know, with our open space planning, the only, the one critique that I have with our open space planning is that in that is that in that plan are about seven or eight community gathering areas. We are a community of what, seven hundred, eight hundred people? How many community gathering areas do we need that we need to spend millions of dollars on? So, so lumping it into the uplands. And the other problem with the uplands with the pavilion is a very nice idea, but it was not considered the noise. They did not consider the noise. There are two schools there. That pickleball court will be shut down. I promise you. And so that's, you know, the end of Horgan Trail is one of the best spots and it was not considered. And this is a unique idea. It's a new idea and it's not being disrespectful. Thank you.
Councilmember Medicas.
First of all, it has been discussed in planning and environmental, vacating the end of that road and connecting those two properties. And in two thousand seventeen, when we did the feasibility study for the uplands, the actual pavilion was, was across that road, you know, getting rid of the road and putting a pavilion there that connected the two. So if you look at the two thousand and seventeen planning, so this isn't, it hasn't, it has been discussed. And the idea of connecting the two either with a pavilion or just vacating the road and connecting them two with, with, uh, grass and landscaping has been discussed for years. So it's not new. The idea of pickleball up there is not new. The Parks and Open Space Plan identified three hubs for our city. One was the Upper Cougar Creek area, which we're building out. One was City Hall and the third one was the uplands area. So if you look at that map of where they thought the hub should be, that's where they located them. And so I just want to be clear, this is not something new and it's not something that has never been discussed. I've been in discussions for over fifteen years with this. And I think it's about time that we pull all of the things together that the community said they wanted. Over a hundred and forty-four people participated, not just a handful of people writing in today about this. This is, you know, a long-range plan. It could be something great for our community and it can include more than just pickleball. That's all I'm saying.
So, based on the feedback I'm hearing, you know, I'm, there's kind of two things that I, I'm taking away. One is this, there seems to be support, at least from some council members, for more of a proof of concept. You know, put pickleball there, a lightweight project that's not permanent, but could show that there is a spot here that may draw people. It might be very low cost in Councilmember Johnson's, you know, perspective. Of course, that intersects with the legality, right? That we'd have to make sure that we are, if we do something like that, that we are doing it properly to make sure that the city's not holding itself liable for risk. There is then the, I think maybe what the larger uplands planning has been considering, which is more of a, a permanent solution, you know, a structure that has athletic facility support, pickleball being one of those potentials and other, could be other recreational elements. And I imagine that, you know, if we ask the residents, there's probably a spectrum of what people, when you say pickleball court, what people expect, right? You know, you say pickleball court, they may be thinking the pickleball courts that are on, off ManJack, right? You know, or they may be thinking Lifetime Fitness, right? You know, there's some concepts in the, in the discovery there versus something that's just painting lines on the asphalt, which may not draw as much popularity, but it may also show that you can do something there for, for pretty cheap. And so, you know, one approach is, you know, wanna separate the uplands from the lightweight pickleball and make this kind of two separate discussion points. I don't think there's support for doing a big uplands project this next full year because of the, the time, the, the, you know, the, the planning that would be involved and take away from the other projects that we prioritize and the thoughtful discussion that needs to happen there. The, I would say, if anything, the, it would be the pickleball planning would be more along the lines of a, a lightweight solution that doesn't interfere with the uplands. It could merge into that, right? You know, eventually could say, you know, this is something that people like and it's, we, we did a proof of concept there. But I'm not sure that the city's ready to say, we're gonna build a permanent pickleball facility here in a specific location until we've considered the, the input from the uplands planning project. I kind of like the idea of having, if there's a way the city can have a lightweight touch to this, of putting lines down, things like that, that don't interfere with the uplands planning, that don't interfere with the existing use of the properties, like the farmer's market, those things, and that we make sure that we're doing it in a proper legal sense. I agree that I don't think that that's necessarily a lot of money, right? You know, for doing it that path. But I'm also, I, I also don't know how, if residents' expectations would be underwhelmed by that, right? If we, if we just gave them very simple access to that and put signage, if the residents would really feel like that was enough, right? Versus saying, we expected more, right? We expected a court. We expected, you know, fencing. We expected a shade and shelter. But I don't think we're ready for designing that until we do that with the uplands. But I do like the idea of just having a, a way for us to do a proof of concept and communicating that to residents, saying, you know, we'd like to get the uplands as a recreational spot evaluated. Part of that could be a pickleball and it may not be in this, this location because maybe it's better to have it incorporated with other facilities like a pavilion or with, you know, other areas that we built. That's my thought is that, you know, maybe there's some budget for, or, or staff direction even. You know, say, can you bring this back as a feasibility? What would be required for the city to put up a, I would, I hate to use temporary, but I think it is a temporary, you know, pickleball facility until we can go into the uplands planning and, and really envision what that would look like from a more permanent standpoint. And I think the feasibility would be, you know, what is the, the legal, you know, the, the right-of-way issues, if there are any, you know, if the city can just, you know, release control to an outside group like you, like the Long Center does, right? You know, where it's not the city's responsibility, but it's activity that's allowed there. And we just let people know that the activity's allowed there by demarking certain spaces. So that may be the, a way to move forward in terms of, we're not gonna tackle the uplands. We're not permanently erecting anything, but we are asking staff to bring back a feasibility for what in a sense would be a temporary use of that, that, that area. So that's, that's my thoughts based on the feedback I'm hearing. I don't think people want a permanent solution. They don't want to do the uplands project there. But they also want to make sure that it doesn't become something that interferes with the uplands project when we do start tackling it and it'll give feedback. Councilmember Rosengard.
I, I just wanted to add to Councilmember Johnson's mention of how simple it could be. When I lived in New York, handball in the size of business owners' buildings was commonplace. Soccer in a vacant lot, open fire hydrants for summer fun. Of course, the city never approved it. So, yeah, you can have a lot of fun. Just don't tell the city. And here's a couple of ideas. Pickleball, what if we have a vacant retail spot? And we allow people per the retail owner, allowing it, to generate some memberships and some gamers in a vacant spot until they find a tenant? As long as, you know, the place is totally empty. Another idea is maybe using the parking lot either at Market Fair or over by Colts. Colts has a huge parking lot that isn't filled every time. So if the two ninety road, Horgan Trail road becomes absolute, can't touch it, well then let's just think outside the box and think of some other areas. Parking lot area, it would keep people close to the retail center. And I'd be willing to set aside ten thousand dollars for the pickleball for this year, but not designated location yet, but at least have some money starting towards that goal. Thank you.
I think, I know ten grand is not much in our budget. I think it's a lot for like what we would do here because it's in a no man's land between, you know, you know, maybe throw it there. I, I think.
We might have to put some signs up that says, you play at your own risk and that's gonna cost some money.
Okay, there you go. It, it is kind of funny because for how much we do, the company I work for compete for space and we kind of have a joking kind of relationship that, so it's like, I do not want to promote pickleball because I'm a soccer player and we fight for space. But I, I think one of us should potentially just unlike our, on the side, go reach out to one of these pickleball groups that you see setting up in Pan American Park or, uh, in downtown, you go around and it's just like, you can't escape it, you know, around every, every corner. And just find out, hey, if there was two, literally two, I think, what was it, forty by seventy feet or whatever? How big's a court? Twenty-two by forty-five, sorry. Like if, we could put like three, but, you know, if there was literally space for four or three or four courts and it was just, the lines are there, show up with your nets and everything else, would you be interested? And they might not be interested. And at that point, it's like, yeah, we're not gonna build a whole thing for you. That retail space though, that's a killer idea. I think you had the idea of doing, um, little pop-up galleries.
Well, the retail space for pickleball courts is happening all over the country.
Yeah.
So old Bed Bath &amp; Beyond's and those sized buildings are being turned into pickleball courts by private enterprise.
Yeah.
Um, so that's really common. And the other thing, uh, well.
No, no, no.
So about the sound issue, the, the national group that does the pickleball, because of all the conflicts that have been happening with the sound of the hard ball hitting the hard paddle, they now have approved paddles that are softer and balls that are softer. And some of the courts that are closer to residential or schools or wherever, they're requiring people to play with those paddles. So they're, they're looking for, you know, ways to solve some of those sound issues.
Young.
I like the idea of doing something, kind of like what Councilmember Johnson suggested, as a trial. Let's see what people's reaction is to it. You know, let's even potentially try it in different areas, like the end of Master Sergeant Horgan Road or in retail space or somewhere else and get a much better idea of the interest in it, how well it would work, where we'd like to put it, without making a permanent decision that it's gonna be right here. Because then it can be more easily incorporated into our future planning. So I like that idea of this not very costly, you know, way of laying it out. And I'm even in favor of like buying nets for people and having the equipment for people that they could get at City Hall. Let's see how well it works.
Councilmember Johnson.
Sorry, I say, you know, anything, you know, nets here, I guess that's okay for, for residents, but I don't want staff to be kind of like check-in, check-out of, of equipment and you leave them over there and they walk and so it's, they're not that expensive. I think most people would just show up with them.
Okay.
And so it, just like literally line, I don't care if it's ten grand, but if that ten grand gets spent.
I'll drop it to five. I'll drop it to five.
Drop it to five.
Okay, four. Keep talking, Rob.
So Mayor, I was going to delete uplands and I've changed it to temporary slash light pickleball planning and feasibility.
Okay.
And, yeah. Councilmember, have you settled on a number?
Put them in two separate lines, two separate.
Forty-five hundred, I think, is what Councilmember Rosengarden ended up with.
There you go.
Yeah.
I do, one thing though, that's interesting is I, I have heard, you know, feedback that vacating that road or that section matches both purposes, right? You know, I think that that's, that's something that we could bring back as part of the feasibility to say, you know, if we vacate the road, then that's, moves us along in both objectives, right? You know, we have the use of the road legally, right? You know, from a, it's not a, it's designated as a, as a, a place that we can do this if there is a legal issue. But it also matches any use of the uplands as a combined property better, right? Which is a bit, like you said, Councilmember Medicas has been discussed for many years, you know, combining the, the triangle and the, the other uplands to make the greater uplands.
And I was teasing and dropping it down to five thousand. You could leave it at, at a suggested ten thousand and see what the rest of council suggests.
Okay. Um, I do want to, oh, go ahead.
Just one more quick comment. The, the one thing that pickleball courts at the end of Master Horgan Trail will do is add an element of connectedness to the uplands. Right now, that is one of the bigger problems with the uplands. It's often a corner of our city and it's not as connected. And that will add, that will bring people there and, and then they'll be saying, you know, a park here would be nice. So it would add, it would build support for that area.
Councilmember Medicas.
Um, I really like the idea that Councilmember Johnson had of maybe approaching some groups around town that do pickleball. I'm sure there's clubs here in Austin. And see if a club would wanna kind of set up a temporary thing and take care of all the stuff that goes with it. And maybe we just, you know.
Look the other way.
No, well, we could do a dollar a year for, you know, a lease, a temporary lease or something. You know, cities do that all the time.
Um, I do want to give an opportunity for residents to weigh in on this as well.
Melissa Gonzalez, twenty-six, Reese. Um, I really like the idea of, that Councilmember Medicas was espousing of having a club come in and interface with us about if we were gonna do a short-term thing, where the locations are. Because I, I, I don't think people here have their minds around the problem, whereas they have all that stuff in their heads. And I think that that's a, a much better way to, to get a recommendation. So I don't think it's a bad thing to pursue this as a recommendation, but I don't think the way we're doing it is a good way to proceed, where we're saying, we're gonna do it here. Because I, I'm not, I'm not remotely convinced, having watched a pickleball game, that that is, is good a location as other people feel like it is. And, and especially having been a person who ran into a thoroughfare and, you know, almost got clipped by a bike just because you're sitting there watching it. You know, it is kind of an interesting spectator sport, actually. You know, it's, you know, it's, it, you'd be out there. So where would people be watching and how that is? I mean, it's just, it's not just people playing, it's people saying, huh, what's that? You know, and so things, things tend to gather. And so you need to kind of think about where the cars are gonna park, where the people are gonna be while they're doing it. Those kinds of things sort of matter. I mean, it's, it's, it's fine, but you just have to think that there's an impact. And you have to think that when you're a city, you're not thinking like you're in LA or, um, New York or other urban areas where you just steal the space because it's such a big place. Here you think liability because that's your job to think liability. And, and I, and I don't think that we can say, oh, we didn't think that people, that those balls would go into two ninety. There's plenty of record of people saying, those balls are gonna go into two ninety, you know? We can't say, well, why didn't you put a fence up, you know, and, and little kids ran after the balls? You know, you, you, why, why didn't, you know, it's like, maybe little kids were playing. That's a whole different thing, you know, than bigger kids playing. You're right by the schools. Are they gonna come over with theirs? Is, is there gonna be supervision? So those, those are the kinds of things that as a city, I think we have to think about when you're just, you know, in an urban, urban area and, and you're gonna say, hey, I'm gonna go play against this ball. There's nobody here. I'm gonna start playing handball against this building. That's a whole different level than being a city council member and saying, what is our liability here? And, and so, and I just, so I don't think it's bad, but I just think that if we can offload the responsibility to a club as the city and they assess and they take the responsibility, I think it's a lot safer position as an elected official to have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? Or this bullet point in our discussion? All right. So we do have a change in that item. We'll keep going as we go through the rest of the list, but there's some support, I think, for exploration. All right. Item six, so employee appreciation. So when staff and I were looking over the budget numbers as part of our, our review, one of the items that came out is that, um, I think there was a correction that was made for employee appreciation. This year we had five thousand dollars for employee appreciation, right?
We adjusted the budget to allow, the, the previous amount was just not enough to do anything.
Right. We, we adjusted the budget this year to allow for a more proper employee appreciation. This is setting it to the amount that it was adjusted to for this year. So it's a correction to what was in the budget. But for me, I think it's an important, you know, element to, to include. The staff was able to take some time away this last week and actually go and go off-site and have a, hopefully an enjoyable year, time at, at Westgate Lanes, which I think was appreciated by, by staff. And this is something that I want to make sure that we have budget for. Councilmember Rosengard.
I, I would definitely vote for this. And if you look at our committee volunteers, you can see that they're, they're weaning. And so if this helps, myself, I wouldn't join just because I get an appreciation night. But I, I would vote for this.
Councilmember Johnson.
That's employee appreciation.
Yes, employee, what did I say?
I think you're thinking volunteer appreciation.
Forgive me. Yes, I would vote for this, for employee appreciation.
Councilmember Johnson.
And I, I, I see that it's just to bring it up to the, because I remember it was like it ran to zero, right? Earlier this year? Did employee appreciation run to zero?
Yeah, it was gonna, yeah, it was gonna run to zero. Yeah, it was going to, yeah, it was going to run to zero.
And what was the budget then?
We did some budget adjustments within the department that either myself or the mayor could approve. So the, the final kind of adjusted number is five thousand, which has given us plenty to do little things throughout the year for like celebrating birthdays, and to do like the, you know, event, like the event we did last week.
Yeah.
Holiday event, so.
So five grand should be good.
Five grand should be enough, yes.
Cool.
Any further questions about this one? Councilmember Rosengarten?
What do we have allocated for the volunteer appreciation now that that's on my mind?
I believe it's seven thousand.
What are we doing? Where are we going?
Uh, y'all are going to Total Wine.
I know, I'm looking forward to that.
And. Well, and we also get, is that also for the, the fleece zip-ups that we get?
Yeah. Every single year. That's for all the swag.
In Texas?
Yeah.
Should be like bathing suits.
We'll get more T-shirts this, next year.
Next year, everybody gets a pickleball paddle.
That's right.
Their logo on it. A soft one. All right. Item number seven and eight are combined. These are the solar facilities or solar installations for the, the two buildings. As we discussed last time, the bids for these are been separated so that we can see the difference. There is a placeholder in the mayor's budget and the, the baseline budget that we have for fifty thousand dollars for this project. These projects in combined total would be about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars total. So it would require, if we funded both of these, an additional amount of funding. I know that staff is also working with the, the sole bidder in this case to determine what rebates might be applicable. I think there's some favorable information that we've gotten from, you know, staff, but also from the, the contractor as to reducing this cost by a significant amount, thirty to fifty percent. I know Councilmember Johnson was asking whether there's a cap that Austin Energy puts on rebates, if we know anything about that at this time, or if it doesn't apply to municipalities, and they may have different rules.
So, yeah, it's a different from what would, on the residential end versus what comes on the commercial end. So we are working with the contractor to get that all sorted out with Austin Energy. So we are looking at, no matter what council has, would have to adopt a budget that covers the full cost because it is a rebate, so we have to pay it, and then we get the money back from Austin Energy. But we are working with them to get everything sorted out with Austin Energy. In addition, it does look like we may be able to get the, the investment tax credit, possibly. There may be a possibility for that as well, so we're trying to work out and see how we can get all of that paperwork completed to do the tax credit. So even, but with the Austin Energy rebate on its own, that's sixty cents to dollar per watt, depending on which one we, which kind of bucket of rebate programs we fall into. So what we are recommending, if council wants to move forward, and also with the adoption of the, awarding the bid, is that it's contingent upon that Austin Energy rebate, that we get that kind of finalized and, and in place before we actually move forward with the project.
Councilmember Johnson, then Councilmember Rosengarten?
So you, you said last, two weeks ago, that it's going, Austin Energy is going to change. You don't know if it's going to be. And so, like, how fast can we move? Because if they, and when would they change their?
In, in January.
In January, so, I mean, could we?
But the project has to be completed to, by January. So, so we would need to move now if we're going to make sure to qualify at this point in time.
When do they think that they could be done?
I mean, they're really wanting to start as soon as possible, so as soon as they can get everything finalized, they are ready to go, so I mean.
I'll shut up.
Councilmember Rosengarten, and then Councilmember Young.
The solar panels is also an agenda item on number thirteen. So what I, and I have a lot of questions on it that I don't think anybody wants to be bored with right now. But the problem is, where would that money come from? That is coming out of the twenty-two, twenty-three surplus, the twenty-three.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-four surplus.
Yeah.
Future, not now. But they would want to get started ASAP.
They would, as soon as they can get started, you know, and I told them October one would be the start date on our end anyhow, so.
Okay. Let's see what is, some of the things. So if, if we approve this within the budget, it's, we're approving agenda item thirteen assumption.
Not at the same time. This would approve the budget amount, but then, then it's a separate action to, to award the contract. And that's what Public Works Director was saying, when, you know, the staff recommendation is to award the contract contingent.
Upon making sure we get that Austin Energy rebate.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
The way that we could proceed is not approve anything to add to the budget to the fifty thousand we have there, and, and then, and then do it as an amendment, right? You know, as a budget amendment. However, you know, I think the, the start time would, would be pushed out until we have that amendment in place. So we wouldn't be meeting again until October seventeenth. So if we, if we want to get started earlier, it's, we need to fund it, right? So it's a question of whether we fund it now, or we bring it back at a later time, or if the DK could be enough first to get started, which I don't think so, because the, the contract value is a firm fixed price, basically.
Okay.
Councilmember Johnson? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Young, you have another.
Just a quick question. Do we know what the amount of the rebate is?
So it's sixty cents or a dollar, it's either sixty cents per watt or a dollar per watt. So it's one of those two. There's two different, like, performance-based or capacity-based, and it depends on which bucket we're going to fall in for each project. So it's going to be either sixty cents per watt, which is the, I mean, it's a thirty-two kilowatt system and a hundred kilowatt system, so it's a pretty substantial rebate.
So it's either, maybe my math is wrong here, but either thirty-two thousand?
Yes.
Or, or a hundred thousand, maximum?
Somewhere in that, that ballpark, yes.
Okay.
So it's, it's a pretty, pretty substantial rebate. And then if we get tax credit on top of that, it's pretty substantial.
Right.
So then, do we really need a hundred and thirty-one thousand and sixty-two?
Pay it in, in advance.
In advance, before you get the rebate?
And we have to get rebated from Austin Energy.
I'm going to tell you, one of my holdups is the fact that we only have one bidder on this job.
So I, I will say to that, that, I mean, because we did turn that RQ, I mean, if we wanted to do, do it again, we'd have to do a whole nother process, and that's going to be a three-month thing that puts us behind that January first kind of deadline. So my church is actually doing this project right now, looking at a hundred K system, and their bids are higher than what we got. So they're doing a hundred K system, and it's about fifty thousand dollars more than what we're doing, what we were quoting. So it's actually pretty competitive from what, and they, they had to get multiple bids, and they, of course, being a nonprofit kind of thing, they can go out and just ask for bids, which we can't just do.
Councilmember Johnson?
So the, uh, two things, I guess. The way that, and maybe it's just different per company, but the company that put in our solar panels, they did all the rebate work, so we were only out the amount less the rebates. I think that was like, it would sign over the rebates to them, and they just.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they do that on like.
There's a lot more money, so I get why. But, and then on the other side is Sunset Valley's, Sunset Valley would only put so much money into the pot per year for rebates. Was that true?
Yeah, we only put like fifteen thousand or something for energy rebates or something like that.
Right. Does Austin Energy do something similar? Like if we finish on December thirty-first, and then we find out, oh, the cupboard is bare, and then.
No, no, because usually you have to get a letter of intent, and you get, Austin Energy then sets aside the money to hold on to it. So you have to get, like, approved. Once Austin Energy approves a project, they still hold the money for you until the project's in.
Great.
And, and we do the same thing. That's why we ask for solar people to, if they're putting solar on their house, to come in in advance and fill out the paperwork and stuff, so we know. Because that's, that's, you know, the big amount of money, so we'll make sure we have that for people.
Yeah, thank you.
So Council, I, this is my item, you know, I, I, something that I'm in favor of, you know, just in terms of, I think it makes sense. If we get the rebates, I think it makes financial sense, right? Just in terms of like, you know, how the system will offset our energy bills, which if you haven't looked at them, we pay about fifteen thousand dollars a year for the PD building alone. We pay about five thousand dollars for the, the Public Works Building. Those are, you know, those are big costs, right? You know, just in terms of keeping the facilities running. These would cover a significant portion of those costs, I think eighty-five, eighty-six percent, you just put the estimate as. I like the idea of doing this contingent on the rebate, so that we understand what the cost is going to be. And I think it's, makes a lot of sense for the city to take advantage of, you know, any, any rebates, but also any incentives that we can get, and then bring that back to council for approval, in that case. But even if you take out the financial equations, and you say, on balance, it's going to be a, a net zero, right, for us? Which I think that's probably the lowest, you know, likelihood. It, for me, it's, it makes a lot, a big statement for the city to be putting our resources into renewables from a, you know, just, just how we want to resonate ourselves as a city, how that reinforces our, our values. So I, I, I'm, I'm pretty much, you know, and, you know, I've done research in terms of like what I need to do. I appreciate staff, you know, doing their research. But for me, I think this makes a lot of, you know, sense. I'd like to see it funded. That being said, I, I'm perfectly happy to do this contingent on making sure that we get the right information, so that council understands the full cost to the city of the project. But I'm encouraged by what we've been able to find out so far with, at, at a minimum, you know, a thirty percent reduction in the price, maybe up to a fifty percent reduction in the price based on what we qualify for, which, you know, given the rates that we're seeing for, for this, I think it makes a lot of sense. And that's my advocacy statement. But other feedback or other questions from, from council this time? Councilmember Rosengarten?
So I would approve the funding or putting the money aside, but when we get to agenda thirteen, I've got lots of questions. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions on those two items? All right, that takes us to item number nine. Sixty-one oh seven Brody Task Order Increase. So council, the background on this is that this is a little bit combined with the sixty-four oh one, where the plating needs to be included, but also the additional amount for landscaping on sixty-one oh seven to, to, to roll into the, the task orders. So I think nine and ten are really, you know, somewhat related, but we can tackle them separately. But council, questions on these two items? The task orders represent, reflect this, so the task orders that are in the backup for the engineering for the later item include these amounts. We just happen to include them in the baseline budget. Any questions, please? Councilmember Johnson?
Landscaping?
Landscaping around sixty-one oh seven is going to be mostly around the trailhead, just to make sure we have trees and some things laid out around that area.
To create like a buffer, or to.
Just to create like a point of entry, like come through the trail here, kind of thing. Yeah, and I would say, yeah, that most of the difference in that amount is actually having to do with the plating.
The plating, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, yeah. I think what, we'd have to go back, it's in the task order how much it is for landscaping. It wasn't a huge number.
All right. Hey, did they take away the propane tank also, or no?
No, the propane tank's still there, and the city's going to hold on to that for a little bit.
Wait, because I think they're like hard, they're expensive and hard to get rid of, right?
Yeah, and from what I found out today, that that one still has a little bit of propane in it, so I've got to figure out like how to actually get it emptied.
Coke down there? Okay, that was it.
Councilmember Metekas?
So I'm just trying to keep track of the dollar amounts in each of these categories. So for this line item, we're actually talking thirty thousand instead of the, where am I, the eighteen-five? Is that what that means?
No, I think thirty thousand was the original number.
Oh.
So, yeah, the, the task, the task order changed to forty-eight thousand five hundred, but the, the current amount in the budget is thirty thousand. So that, that eighteen-five hundred is adding too.
Additional, okay.
So total, it's adding, for the sixty-one oh seven, sixty-four oh one, it's adding thirty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-five to the general fund.
Yeah, and most of that is plating.
Plating, yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure I got the right numbers. Okay. That's all.
Councilmember Johnson?
It's how much for plating? I mean, this is why so many properties aren't platted. There's no, there's no utilities run into it. Like, that's the whole point, isn't it? Right? Well, don't plant it. I guess you gotta, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, got to follow our codes.
That is insane. Okay. So that's just how much it costs?
It's because we're plating sixty-four oh one, does not mean we have to have it planned. We are just plating the property so that it is a legal lot. So it's not, we're not tackling the zoning issue or what we're doing.
Oh, no, I know, I just, you know.
Yeah.
Does the plant have to cover current utilities that are running to it? And that's like why it isn't just.
It would include.
I, I just don't understand why plating is just so expensive. It's not really something we need to talk about. That's the price. So.
Exactly.
We got to plant it. Hey, yeah, get up there.
Councilmember, it'd be to ensure the utilities and the survey work as well. Would have to be done.
Pardon?
So it's not only utility, you know, ensuring the utilities are there, but also working on the survey, we require a survey.
Okay.
In order to plan.
Call a survey.
I'll do what I can to lower the cost by handling as much of the planning angle as I can and bring it to y'all for your approval.
Any other questions on these two items? Next is item number eleven, City Hall Pond. So this is again another.
Yeah, well, we'll discuss details later and under Agenda Item nineteen, but we did want to just include this in the budget, additional task order. And discussing with the Public Works Director, the good thing is we can, you know, the city facilities fund's closed out. You know, we've, we've closed that fund. So when we are dealing now with the pond, we can pay that out of the venue or green tax. So, which has a healthy, I think we like, has like two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar surplus, and excess revenues FY twenty-four. So that, at least it won't affect the, the general fund. So, but we will discuss details in, in executive session for Agenda Item nineteen.
And again, this is included in the backup for the task orders, but just not in the baseline budget. Any questions on this item? All right, item number twelve is benches. And, go ahead, Carol.
There's, I'm hoping everybody saw it. There's a bench out there that's actually been moved over by the restrooms. That is a reclaimed wood bench that is made out in dripping springs. Planning and environmental have looked over this, and they're recommending purchasing the benches to be placed out in the green spaces. So these are, just to be able to purchase those benches and start off, and eventually, hopefully, people then can do an adaptive wrench kind of thing as well, and five inches to be placed in people's memory, in a green space. But these will be the ones the city kind of places in the first place, and these are out in the green spaces and conservation areas. And the one that's out, that's over there has been outside for a year now, so it's just got moved in now, and one came over here to visit.
Councilmember Rosengarten?
I was ready to say, why are we adding new things that we haven't even seen, council hasn't seen? But at the same time, I've got a list in front of me that I want to present, so I was like, okay. But you're saying P and E is bringing these benches to us?
Yes.
And the bench, we have an example out here.
It's outright by the restrooms right now.
By the restrooms right now?
It's really cool.
I can't see it through the doors, okay. All right. That's something I remember talking about when I first got on council, about doing benches on the trails, et cetera, so people could rest in between their walks. And as we have a more retiring age group, it's harder to walk the whole trails without taking a break. I know some folks. Anyway, so I would definitely vote for this item. Thank you.
And we, we may, just in thinking about the pricing of the benches, there's also the need to install footing.
Yeah, we'll have to do some kind of footing.
On the.
Correct.
You know, on the ground. We've got to have some concrete footing. So three thousand, we might want to increase that just a little bit, just so we can get a decent amount of benches and the, the footing and installation.
Go to five?
Yeah, and, and these are really nice benches, and the fact that they're made just, you know, twenty miles away, basically, is pretty cool, too, so.
I like that.
And take a chance when we have a break to go and try it out.
Oh, I'm sorry, Council, Councilmember Metekas, and then Councilmember Johnson, I think you had your hand raised first.
Yeah, I agree that we should increase that to the five thousand, so we have the appropriate footing for all of them, so they're not sitting on the ground. But they're lovely benches, and they're very heavy.
Are they metal, wood? What are they?
Wood. Reclaimed wood.
They are wood. They're, they can make them out of different types of wood. I think the one that's out there right now is made out of oak. And like I said, it's been sitting outside for a year, and it looks amazing.
Okay.
Councilmember Johnson?
The, I, I think it's fine. What is the lifetime of, of these? The.
Are they treated?
Yeah, they've got some kind, I don't know what the coating they use on them, but they've got something on them that must keep them kind of waterproofed in some way.
I don't know, like, where is it?
It's in the hallway to the bathroom.
Okay.
Just go over and look at it.
The.
And they, I know the ones that we have out here. And they, I know the ones that we have out here that, you know, we had a scout who had a very handy grandfather who built those, they've been out there for probably seven years now, and we go out there and maybe you can touch them up every once in a while, but they're holding on great.
What's that one stretch through the Sunset Valley nature area, it's called the Something Mile?
Oh, the Moody Mile?
No, it's like named after a person.
The Moody Mile.
Moody Mile, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. So there's one bench in there, it's looking pretty rough, and it's like, so I guess they do eventually...
Yeah, and, and so we're going to replace that one with probably these, and these seem to be holding up really well.
Okay. That one always looks like a deer to me, like also I'll be running through and the one that's currently on the Moody Mile, I'm like, nope, not a deer, so.
I hate to put it outside, it's so nice.
It's been outside.
It's amazing, right?
Wow. Yeah, it's very thick, so it'll take a long time before it rots. Hopefully it never would.
If council would like to go look at them, we can take a short minute to... You get enough, Ron?
I approve.
It is very nice.
Okay. Any other questions on that item? All right, number 13, as the city administrator introduced this one, what we did when we were planning for Upper Cougar Creek is we took all of the money that had been set aside for open space planning and moved that to fund the Upper Cougar Creek project, which also required additional funding on top of that because of the projects, you know, is more than what we'd, we'd set aside, we had about 400,000 left over, I think, after the various projects, and we had already this year had planned on using some of that money for trail signs and wayfinding, but we didn't get that project completed, and so we didn't include a separate funding for that. This, of course, could be part of the money that we use the estimated surplus for, which we, in previous councils, when we adopted the budget, have set aside more money to invest in the open space project, so this essentially could be considered part of that, if we put in another 100,000 aside for that, this could come out of that set aside, or we could just designate this amount to be set aside this year and it would fund this, you know, portion of it. Any questions about this one that we want to dive into? Councilor Johnson?
I'm seeing over on the right, hot fund surplus and reserves, so how much are we using from the hot funds?
I don't think any, I don't, I don't necessarily advocate allocating any at this time, but when we're researching what signage we want to purchase, and we want to have, you know, wayfinding signage that sort of matches the trail signs, if it's wayfinding specifically, you know, hotel, hotel this way, shopping this way, we can use hot funds for that, so, you know. So when we know the cost, then we can just do a budget amendment to use the hot funds.
I am so glad you mentioned that, because I have talked about that once before, that we need to have signage over at the hotel directing people this way to the shopping and, and a sign over here directing people to the hotel that might be in the area.
I think, you know, the Savannah Trail will be a really good, in talking with men, as the Savannah Trail, you know, is constructed and we're putting up signs, that'll be a really good way to test, okay, here's, here's our new look, here's our new signs, and then once we have those, we can, you know, we, once we have the design, then we can put them throughout, throughout the city, but the wayfinding especially in, you know, Savannah Trail, Upper Cougar Creek area, and yes, over by the hotel.
Councilor Johnson and then Councilor Young?
So these, these are the ones that we voted on, and then the, then the company that was going to do them wasn't able to make them, right?
I don't remember that. Was that right?
The one with the...
The finial, yeah, and that was too expensive or something, right?
And those will get ripped off, like, I already saw into the future on that.
But option two is what we were looking at.
Yeah.
Which is the, the brown ones with like the sunset looking, or...
It's got the different colors at the top, I think.
Yeah.
It's like a band, kind of.
Yeah, it's a brown, kind of a dark brown poles, and then it's got kind of some bright colors mimicking kind of the sunset.
That was my favorite, so I'm just going to shut up.
Councilor Young and then Councilor Reitz?
So I'm a little confused, is this $50,000 that we allocated in last year's budget that we didn't spend and are carrying over?
Well, it's really not, that's probably, I shouldn't have typed that, because it's not carried over because it was, it was not spent, but we've already allocated it because we took anything remaining in that parks and open space and put it towards Upper Cougar Creek and Savannah Trail.
Okay, okay, now I understand.
So, as the mayor, you know, the mayor said we could, with surplus from FY '23 surplus, right, when we adopted the budget in September of last year, we decided to continue the surplus revenue fund specific to parks and open spaces, right, so we can allocate up to $100,000 from that, so that, as the mayor said, we could take 50,000 from that 100,000, or we could just allocate 50,000 from surplus, general funds, and FY '24 that we haven't dedicated yet to anything.
So the, so the choice is to either take it out of the surplus from FY 2023, or make it part of the budget for FY 2024?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I just wanted, I needed some clarity on that.
Correct.
Councilor Reitz?
And are we working with Violet Crown Trail for wayfinding?
Yes, we will be working with Violet Crown Trail. What I would probably like to do is to work with, they have a vendor who does some of their signs, a lot of vendor who, well, with the design of the signs and stuff, but they have a separate vendor who obviously makes the signs, and work with them on trying to get these together, as far as wayfinding and making sure everything kind of melds together as best as we can.
Good.
Any further discussion on this item?
So is there a direction on, do we want to...
I would approve it.
In the, in, for FY '24?
I think just make it cleaner and just...
Okay.
All right, the last item is the American Rescue Funds encumbered for monument signs. This is not, this is already committed and it's just moving it into our budget so that we can actually spend it, so this is obviously something that we've been talking about, CD's been talking about in P and E and other groups, so we want to make sure that this is part of the budget, but it's already committed funds, so it's, it's just putting it into the budget so we can spend them. Any questions on this item? Councilor Rosenkern?
So if it's already committed and the fund's back, is coming out of this 541 or no?
No.
Okay, so that's an amount to...
So I can start adding, if we're good with amounts, I can start adding. Okay, so, if we approved all of these items, we would add 354,257 to the general fund, which would still leave us with a surplus of 187,569.
Oh, I know why my, I was going to say our math doesn't work out, I changed the 60,000 for the trail and the sidewalk to 30,000, because that's a very expensive sidewalk for 60,000. So I don't...
Based on Carolyn's recommendation to start doing a feasibility at this time and then bring back a construction cost?
Yeah, then we bring it back, yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so I think that's changed.
Okay.
So that's looking at, so yeah, 324,257.
Councilor Medicas?
So what about the amount we said we'd pull each year if we had a surplus into the parks and open space?
So we, as council decided that we could move up to 100,000 when there's this available surplus to continue funding parks and open space, and so as of this budget, we've taken all the money that we built up and removed it to commit or to fund the Upper Cougar Creek, so we still have additional surplus that we could take the 100,000 and, or up to 100,000 and continue to fund open space projects and build up our reserves, so that would be something when we're adopting the budget, it'd be, I think the motion last year included, and I can't remember the language that we used, but to, to basically commit 100,000 of the surplus to the open space projects, so that'd be part of the motion, just to include that.
Yeah, that first total, that's committed general, committed general funds that are moving out of committed, either to the general fund or to the 100,000 goes to the utility fund, and then general fund, and then just 5,000 to the venue green tax fund.
Councilor Rosenkern?
And then I had an item that is dear to my heart that I wanted to present. I have sent a request to Community and Economic Development Committee, have not heard anything back, and so maybe Public Safety wants to take it on, chief. I did send the information to Public Safety also, to the chief, and it is, we as council have to take training about phishing scams, fraud, et cetera, and before I took the class, they test you to see how good you are, and there was something that said you haven't paid this invoice or something, and I'm going, what invoice are they talking about? Boom, aha, you need to take a class, you just have been fished and you shouldn't be opening emails you don't trust. Well, I did some more research, and after taking this class, I was so impressed with the classes that we took, that I would like for all of the residents to be aware of this. We have a lot of small business owners in Sunset Valley that don't have corporate America sponsoring fraud, phishing, scam classes, and the chief and Public Safety put on a scam fraud class earlier this year, and it was fantastic. However, it wasn't just for the residents, and it was during the day when most residents are working, so I'm looking for something that'll be on either a weekend or an evening, but that more people get this education. Just this last week, I got a couple of emails that say, thank you for your purchase, such and such, I'm going, I didn't purchase anything, asked Randy, he didn't purchase anything. So somebody who does a lot of purchases, maybe there's a number of people in their household, or somebody who does purchasing for their business, their small business, might open it up and not realize, so you have to look for the little clues they taught us to, before you click on something, so. They say it's $2,500 because a guy is out of Florida that would come and that would pay for his travel, but the chief, if, if you can find someone who's local that can do as, as great a program, that would be wonderful.
Okay, that's the know before training that the city...
Yes, know before you speak.
The city, we use that for our city employees, so...
Yes.
We can, we could look into being able to provide it to the public if that's what the residents are interested in.
And the earliest they could do anything is May of next year, and it's Roger Grimes is the speaker.
So Councilor Rosenkern, it sounds like you'd like to add a new item and put fraud training or for residents and potential funding of up to 2,500, so we have a budget placeholder for that?
Yeah. We might want to go to three, just in case we provide some snacks and stuff, go to 3,000 even.
So we'll put that down to market and then we'll open up further questions and comments. Councilor Reitz and then Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, is, is this something that we could, our residents could take an online course as opposed to showing up to a class? I mean, just like we did.
Just like we did.
And, and I will say, it was very helpful, because the next day I was asked to send my driver's license, and I wrote back and said, no, I'm not going to do that, and then they backed down, they said, okay, we don't need it, so.
Good, yeah.
Yeah, online would be good.
whichever way works, but I just think we need to get that information out.
Yeah.
Well, so I was wondering if he would allow us to record it and then it could just be...
Oh, maybe that, yeah.
Yeah, then, I mean, we could do it remotely at the time, he's coming in from...
Florida.
Florida, we might be able to see if he wants to do two while he's here, just do, because it doesn't always work, but if he allowed us to record, I know he probably doesn't want that to just be like available, because that's his whole business model.
Big charge for the classes.
Yeah. I will say though, so I have all my email clients set up not to like automatically fetch content, so if it's, the content of the email is already, and so I did, I did click on, I knew what they were doing, I did click on one and it's like, gotcha, like, no, you didn't, because none of my email clients fetch remote data, so they didn't get me. I know this stuff, but, but, so the guy that did the scam one already, that was the same guy?
No.
It's a different one?
No, the ones, the class that we got, that's for know before you speak, but the program you guys had where you invited someone, who was that? What was his name again?
He was, he was an insurance company rep.
George Hamilton, right?
Yeah, his was more fraud in general, this is cybersecurity training than know before training, and they have it online, we can look at some options for providing it, or we could have them come here, but it shouldn't be that expensive, and it's, it is pretty good training.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
And, and I, I will also say, I was the victim of a, a check that was, I had mailed and someone had taken my check and put in their own, they used the same amount, which was 500, but put it to them, and they actually deposited in their account, and then I went to the Sunset Valley Police and my bank, and I think they found the guy, so, outstanding. But now I, I don't send out checks very often.
You know, you don't, you don't think about it, I mean, really, you don't think about it, when you write a check, you're giving them your account number and your routing number right there on your check, and all these years, we just trusted people, and now all of a sudden it's, wow, scary.
Any further discussion on this item? Adding a small amount for, bringing back a proposal for some type of fraud prevention training for residents? Okay. All right. So council, Matt, can you go to the top, I just want to run through these real fast, make sure we, we got kind of agreement. Water consideration rebate, we've already approved that amount, so this would be formalizing it, a study for the sidewalk and engagement with the residents to make sure that we get their feedback, investigating our feasibility of a temporary light pickleball planning, employee appreciation, making that the 5,000 amount, putting budgets but not approval for the solar projects, which is the item nine and 10, and then task order increases, those are included in the task orders, seed oil ponds included in the task orders, benches we included, additional funding for concrete padding, street trail signage and wayfinding to include that in the budget, we can also have the option of including additional open space funding, because we, we know we're going to have more open space projects, American Rescue Funds plans, taking it out of committed to allow us to spend them this year, and then fraud prevention training for residents. So those are the items that we, we have listed. Councilor Medicas?
Oh, I'm ready to make a motion.
I'm ready to hear it.
I move that we approve item number two, number four, number five, number six, number seven, number eight, number nine, number 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and number three is direction to staff to work with the residents on identifying what is Sunset Valley property and what is the City of Austin property, and an additional 100,000 into the parks and open space planning.
And do you also want to approve the budget at the same time?
Oh, sure. And approve the budget. Let's just do it all.
Okay, so this is a, a motion to approval and ordinance adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023, and terminating September 30th, 2024, and making appropriations for projects and accounts, including the items that you listed that we tracked on the spreadsheet here.
Except item number one, which we deleted.
Right, the ones you named off, yeah, okay. That's a motion, is there a second for that motion before we begin the discussion? Councilor Reitz?
I will second.
And Councilor Rosenkern?
So with doing the math, I have 112,745 left over, is that correct? If, if my numbers are right.
So I do need to add an additional, is it an additional item or you're just 100,000 going from the surplus?
From the surplus into parks and open space.
From...
You can make it 16 if you want.
What's...
What's the 16?
The parks and open space 100,000.
Oh, number 16, that's what you said.
Yeah, because he's...
Committed.
I stated it.
We're adding. So it's not coming, adding, yeah. It's coming from general, general to committed. So it's actually in this column.
Kind of put it on there to do the math.
So.
So council member that.
117,569. Okay, I've got 112,745. Whatever's left over, I would like to make a friendly amendment. That the additional money that's left over, that, let me think. 90,000 be allocated to Upper Kukua Creek for statue of some sort or some type of beginning of artwork. And then the rest towards infrastructure and utility.
So. Yeah, so.
That's 117,569?
I'm going to add two more, yeah. So we're going to do seven, item 17.
Let's just make it an even number, okay, let's do 7, 5, 6, 9. Okay, it's never going to be an even number, yep. Yeah, that's fine. And the reason being, Upper Kukua Creek is our retail. The sooner we do things at Upper Kukua Creek, in my opinion, that beautify the area, that cause people to hang around it more, the better. K Pod is now, the building is now painted, things are now starting to happen again. There's, you see, when I talk to Matt, electricians are now going in the building, so hopefully that's going to happen. So now keep those people who gather for the K Pod, because I'm looking forward to it, near the area. Thank you.
All right, so this is not part of the motion yet, but the proposal is to take the remaining amount that's in the surplus and put $90,000 to the Upper Kukua Creek project for artwork in addition to the work that's being done in phase one.
Correct.
And then any remainder or the remainder being put into the utility infrastructure.
Councilmember, I think I found where your math was right and mine was wrong. I added 3,000 to the wrong column, so, yeah, hang on. So this would be 24. Okay, okay. All right, which would make the general fund a balanced budget, so, okay, zero balance.
Councilor Medicas.
So, well, it's a friendly amendment, but I wanted to discuss that.
No, it's, it's, it's not, it's, your motion has not changed, right? The motion is as it is, Councilor Rosengard is making it as part of her discussion, is proposing changing the motion to include these additional items.
And then on Robert's rules, do you discuss the first motion? Or do you discuss the second motion and see if it passes and then vote, vote on the first motion?
Yeah.
That's my question, should we just vote on the first motion and then discuss this? Because I'd like to discuss that because I have some ideas.
Well, it can, we can separate the, the budget and we can amend the, the budget, we can add additional to the budget.
I think you can say no to the friendly amendment. It's been a while, I'm a little out of, unless you want it.
Well, I, I want something that's similar, but I wanted to discuss that.
So can you, can you, council, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm spaced, Darren. The friendly amendment, she makes the decision, right? Whether she wants it or not, yeah. Yeah, right, so.
So I decline the friendly amendment and then we.
There we go.
Or, when, when can we discuss it? Yeah, I know.
We still, we still have 112,745 left over now, but it doesn't mean we have to spend it. We could also put it in reserves.
Who are you?
So.
I like the idea, I just want to talk.
Yeah, so I, I, I think your idea of passing the first motion is good. That way it's done and over with and then we discuss the 112,745.
Can we do that? That'll be cleaner.
It'd be very clean.
I think it's 114, right? We decided?
It's just list up to 15 and then 17 and 18 we would discuss separately.
Up to the parks and open space, right?
Yeah, so do a total, total to that and then add the last two separately or then we know what our last two numbers are.
Uh, okay. So. Going to do totals. Grab everything, no. So this is first motion. Right?
Yeah.
Then forget this. Well, yeah. That's the first. So we're only, we're only talking about this right now, right? Correct?
Up to.
And then this was the.
Up to number 15, 16.
Right. Okay.
So are you saying 140 is left?
Up to 17, yeah, first motion.
What is the dollar amount that's left after we approve?
I think if this was, if this was approved, there would be. Excuse me, if this was approved, there would be 114,569, still excess revenues in the general fund.
Okay.
Good.
And just to, we, we can pass this motion and we can still continue on this agenda item and deal with the remaining budget to make it, or I think it's cleaner if we just have one motion that includes everything.
Who's a parliamentarian?
Right.
Anybody know what the rule is?
So we're, so with the motion, if, as it stands, I don't believe there's a second. It would adopt the budget adding up to, it would adopt the budget, the proposed budget, the latest version with the addition of items, one, well, items listed up through 16, except for the ones we struck out, which I believe was one and three. Right, so then that would adopt the budget, budget adopted. So then if we wanted to talk about, then we'd be talking about our first, if I'm understanding this correctly, we'd be talking about our first budget amendment.
Right, so it's cleaner if we, if we just have a single motion.
How about we do this? Well, except the friendly amendment and then we can discuss it.
Yes.
Correct? And then it's all the same motion.
But Councilor Reitz also seconded, so she would have to accept.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know that you seconded it, I'm sorry.
Okay, I will, I will agree.
Okay, all right, so the motion is, you know, right now it's, it's including all these items plus items that we just added, 18 and 19 or, I can't remember.
With the friendly amendment.
With the friendly amendment, yeah.
For discussion.
Okay, so let's go to discussion.
Okay. So I love the idea of the art and I don't know if everybody's been following the news about the troll in Peace Park. By artist Thomas Danbo. These are done all over the world and they're with recycled material and they, there's like a treasure map basically or a trail map where you can go and see these all over the country and all over the world, but there's a lot of them in the United States. The Peace Park Conservancy is proposing he build one in Peace Park. And these are pretty incredible structures and they draw a tremendous amount of attention. And if we could, I think us to fill out his form on his website to get in his radar because if he could build one there and then come over here and build one here, it would put us on a national map. And it would bring tremendous amount of people into the shopping center. They're awesome. I just saw one in Victor, Colorado. They're, he meets with people in the community, they talk about what our values are and then he designs them for the community. And they're, they're just amazing and it's, it's a tourist attraction, basically. And maybe you can pull up a picture of him, but while he's in the area, it might be really a great opportunity for us to engage him and to be part of a, of a really viable art. People go and get their pictures taken with them. Yeah, this is the Peace Park, they're, they're, they're different sizes, but they're pretty big. But he also does other kind of artwork and it's all recycled material. And he does natural playgrounds too. So I think this could be an opportunity for us to get on the radar for that. And so I would like to see us not put that extra money in the utility, but to put it all in the art project.
As long as that art project is on Upper Kukua Creek and that we don't define exactly who the artist is yet, that we have further discussion.
Sure. I'm fine with that.
Councilor Medicas, you, and so you want to put the whole 114,000 dollars towards art in Upper Kukua Creek?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll agree to that also.
Okay. All right, so Carolyn, what's being proposed? Yes, you're, you got it right here.
They're so cool.
That's very cool.
Yeah, so Matt, the, the change that has been discussed is instead of $90,000 for row 19, the full 114, 659, and then delete row 20. And that would true us up or I think we had to get the, maybe the right, the amounts just off, yeah. 569, yeah, so, and then correct it over on the. Okay, so that would be setting aside some additional funding specifically for art in Upper Kukua Creek. Councilor Young.
So a question, if for whatever reason, and you showed me this before and I love it, I think it's great. But what if we can't get this guy or schedule this guy to do this? Then what happens with this money?
We already agreed that we're not defining the artist.
Okay.
Right, so we would look for another artist. I believe men's already talking to Tammy West, who's a nationally recognized environmental artist also for a project.
And that, by the way, that art, that's already in the.
It's in the budget.
That's in the budget, yeah.
But this would be an additional.
This would be an additional piece.
So some art, other art from another artist, be great if we could get in Danbo's list, but.
You, you know that I love public art, that I think public art is a fantastic investment that, that really pays off in a lot of different ways. But I want us to consider something else and maybe we consider this outside of this budget process. I mean, originally in this document, staff is recommending that we move 290,000 dollars into the utility fund because we know, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, well, that, that's what the FY, that's what the FY 23.
This is what the FY 2023.
Yeah, so.
So this is all FY 2024?
This is FY, yeah, this is FY 24, right?
So we're still moving that 290,000 dollars into.
It, that's, I mean.
Then never mind.
Yeah.
Well, so we still had to close the books out.
I just want to make sure.
We still have to close the books out on this fiscal year, so we won't have that amount until October.
Okay.
But that would be the recommendation is that any current year surplus, we fund infrastructure.
Yep.
Okay, no, I'm, as long as we are funding the utility infrastructure fund the way we need to, I'm fine with this.
Okay. All right, I do want to take other council member feedback, but I also want to open up for members of the public who should speak to this before we take any action. They said it, all right. Councilor Johnson, we'll wait for you to vote.
He's hungry. Everybody look at Councilmember Johnson. No breaks during budget.
All right, so I'll make sure we're clear on this. So what we're voting on is approval and ordinance adopting and approving the, the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023 and terminating September 30th, 2024 and making appropriations for projects and accounts, including the additions that we've marked here on the spreadsheet. Items number two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17. And we're also, as part of this moving, and that's including, yeah, the, the moving 100,000 is already in there, so. All right, everybody clear on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
And in description, make sure that on 19, it says Upper Kukua Creek Art.
Upper Kukua Creek Art, yep.
Oh, it does.
All right. And with that, congratulations, council, we passed our budget, as always. Thank you, thank you, council, for all the hard work. Thank you, residents and members of the committees that worked on this, especially budget and finance. And thank you especially to staff and you did a terrific job this year, so really appreciate it. All right. With that, council, we can move on to item number four, which is council consideration of agenda items for approval on consent. And I think Councilor Rosengard, you sent me a list that you wanted to move forward with earlier today. If you want to go ahead and start with that list and then we'll see if maybe I want to pull any of these items.
I move to approve on consent, agenda item number five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 14, and 15, and 17.
Okay, so move, motion to approve on consent, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 14, 15, and 17. Does anybody want to pull any of those items forward discussion? Councilor Johnson?
Just number seven, there was like some last updates. I, I don't know if anyone, well, we'll pull it and then I'll.
We'll, let's go and pull it. Okay, so pull number seven. Any other items that council wants to pull?
Just make sure, agenda item number nine is with revision.
With revision, yes.
Number 17 is with new revised improvements.
Okay, there was additional revisions that you had.
That was it, just from the last council, the improvements on the job descriptions.
Okay. Okay, is there a second to approve on consent? Item number five, six, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, nine with, it was revised ordinance that was submitted today. 10, 11, 12, 14, 15, and 17 for the revised job descriptions. Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, we approved on consent, the minutes from the September 5th, 2023 regular meeting. Item number six, the appointment of Kenton D. Johnson as municipal court judge for a two-year term beginning October 1st, 2023. Item number eight, approval of an ordinance levying a zero-dollar tax rate for the use and support of the municipal government of the city of Sunset Valley, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023 and apportioning each levy for the specific purposes. Item number nine, approval of an ordinance adopting water, wastewater, solid waste and drainage utility rates for residential and commercial customers of the city of Sunset Valley, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023. Item number 10, approval of an ordinance amending the commercial and residential development fee schedules effective October 1st, 2023. Item number 11, approval of annual contracts for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023. Item number 12, authorization of engineering and landscape architectural task orders for fiscal year 2023 and 2024. Item number 14, approval of a temporary special use permit for the city of Sunset Valley to host a Halloween truck or treat event at 4805 US Highway 290 on October 31st, 2023. Item number 15, approval of a temporary special use permit for the Bodies Race Company to hold a 15K marathon. That doesn't make sense, along Jones Road, Ernest Rolles Way and the Highway 290 frontage road on Saturday, December 16th, 2023. And item number 17, approval of amendments to 18 job descriptions and or titles and creation of a maintenance crew lead position. All right, so council, let's go back to item number seven, which is consider an act on appointment of resident volunteers to the five standing committees and the Arts Commission for a one-year term beginning October 1st, 2023. And, and I think we got the, the updated list, if, if administrator is going to be bringing that up. And so my understanding right now is that we, all the committees have five members with the exception of budget and finance, which only has four members.
Four, correct.
Okay, Councilor, Mayor Portem Johnson, did you want to go over anything with staff on this one?
It was just that, even the list that we got yesterday, I think was out of date. And so there's a few more names that kind of like.
So which ones came in after the list?
So the list that, that when I sent the email yesterday, there's been no addition. So the list that, that when I sent the email yesterday, there's been no additional after that. So that includes.
Did you have one on Friday then? There, there was one that was.
So, so the list that yesterday is real time, so if there were any updates, but I don't, when I sent that email yesterday, there were no additional, um, applications. So.
So we're short on a couple.
We're short on one.
Budget and finance.
Budget and finance.
So.
All right.
They never completed a.
Wanda, what do you think? What should we do? Would you be interested in assisting or?
Uh, I am not ready.
Okay. I know, but after November? So with four, and it says minimum should be five.
Yeah. I, I mean.
Why don't we, why don't I reach out to a couple of people this next week? Give me a little longer than one week, two weeks, because I'm going to be out of town and see if I can get someone.
Okay. You know, we have a meeting scheduled for the twenty-eighth, but I don't, I mean.
I don't think I'll have someone that fast.
And well, council has to.
Michael Francis is who I'm thinking of, but he's probably tired of serving. And I don't blame him.
But does Budget Finance have to take action in the September meeting?
No, we could put, we could push, it just pushes back financial statements and other things.
So if we approve this, the, the list that as it is, the applicants, Budget and Finance would still need to recruit one additional person before we can meet our, our code.
Yes. And, and then they could hopefully be seated by October seventeenth and then they can meet in October. They'll just have a pretty full agenda.
Right. Okay.
So we could vote on all the other committees tonight.
We could even, we could go ahead and appoint the four.
Yeah.
Just, just appoint the list as is and then hopefully by the seventeenth, we can have another one or two people for Budget and Finance.
The first meeting could just be orientation.
Yeah.
No action.
No action.
So this wine event had better be good so more people want to volunteer.
So last year, I feel like we had to read every name, didn't we? I remember reading a lot of names.
I remember stumbling over a few names that one year, so I, I prefer that we just adopt the.
So we did, we did it a couple of ways. Some, uh, a couple, like you said, one year, everybody who was, uh, going to be on a committee took the, that committee and, and appointed, decided on that committee, those committee members. Another time, one person just made the vote across the board.
And the, and the, and that's what I'm going to do, but the thing is, it says, the list is attached and then it goes immediately to the next agenda item. So.
Right. But, yeah, so that was a mistake. The list didn't get attached, but you could just approve the, the latest version of the list.
That's what we're going to do. Here we go.
Okay. Go ahead, Mayor Portem.
I'd like to make a motion to act on appointment of resident volunteers to the five standing committees and the Arts Commission for a one-year term beginning October first, twenty twenty three.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Further discussion on this item? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. And a big thank you to all the people who are volunteering to serve on committees. They are a very important part of our process and give us, um, great advice because of their technical expertise and just their willingness to dive into issues that, um, affect all of us. So thank you to all of them. All right. So council, we'll move on to the next item, which is agenda item number thirteen. Consider act on award of a contract to Texas Solar Outfitters for solar photovoltaic installation of the police department and public works department facilities pursuant to RFP number zero, seven, two, four, two, zero, two, three. And Councilor Rosengard, you want to discuss this one?
Yeah. Uh, so on this one, my, my concerns are, number one is that we only have one bid. Second concern is they're based out of Houston. They're not even local. Third, annual contract. It says a five-year annual contract, but then on another page, on appendix A, scope of service, page one eighteen of two hundred and fifty-one pages, it says two, twenty-five hundred dollars annually. But then you go to page, uh, the appendix B, bit sheet, page one twenty of two fifty-one, and it says five-year annually to twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, it should be twenty-five hundred annually because they'll be coming out twice a year to clean the solar panels.
That's our twelve thousand dollars.
Every, twenty-five hundred every year for five years.
That's a new expense that we will be incorporating in the budget process.
What I would say for this is that we aren't, we, I would like to see if they can incorporate this building into it because this contract is only for those two buildings and this building also needs the cleaning. So at this point in time, I don't think we're going to move that part forward with the twenty-five hundred.
Well, it looked like, per the paperwork, it said it must include City Hall.
I didn't see that on there.
It's in there. Uh, let's see if I have it in my notes, but it's in there.
Yeah, it's, I, yeah, it shouldn't, it wouldn't.
It's in your bidding process where you, uh, filled out the sheet and you said all the dollar amounts and then it says must include City Hall.
Yeah, and I don't think this includes that, um.
So how did they bid if they didn't follow the bid requirements?
So that may have been a type O leftover from the previous solar to say City Hall. Let me see. Where, where do you see that it said City Hall on here?
I have to go back and, and find it now.
Because what I was seeing was because it says, I, in the documents for them, it says number one and two, which would be the two buildings that they're covering with this.
I saw it again and again, but again, it's, uh.
Yeah, if it said, said City Hall, that was, we, we had clarified with them before that it doesn't, that City Hall is not included.
Can you go to a, yeah, you've got it. See, mine, mine's on my computer, so I can't go right to that item.
Are we going to their, their bid or to the art, the, when we, the one we issued or are we talking about their, their response?
I'm thinking it's on the one you issued, which means.
It mentioned City Hall.
Yeah, then that was, we had clarified that it was not City Hall with them.
If you put out a bid and you request within your bid, these are the items you're bidding on and it must include City Hall, and then they say, yes, twenty-five hundred dollars annually for five years. Logically, it tells me they're, they're listening to your bid and they're responding back to your bid. But you said you clarified. Now, where did you clarify? Because I see nothing in writing that says this does not include City Hall.
But if you look at what they proposed, it's for proposal one and two, which is these buildings. So it does not include City Hall.
Okay. Hate working with a small screen where you can't see it as quickly and get to it as quickly. All right. So I'm going to, um, just move on. Uh, the next thing, the solar panels have a twenty-five-year warranty. The inverter has a twelve-year warranty. The battery has a ten-year warranty. Work machine, workmanship is a ten-year warranty. Maintenance. Who's going to take care of all the maintenance after their five years?
No, I, I would recommend that we have a maintenance proposal every year for all of the solar systems to take care of that. Because once you, if you don't clean them, they become less efficient. So you're losing money.
In, in the body of, uh, one of the pages, it says TSO has the right to substitute system equipment without customer's agreement with no ex, as long as it doesn't cost the city more money and it does, does not materially affect the system's performance. Are you aware of that?
Right. Yeah, we, we don't, we didn't put down specific equipment or anything for them to install.
Okay. Next, knowing when the new buildings were built, the Public Works Building and the PD Building, and myself, knowing that we have solar panels on City Hall and staff, previous staff knowing and existing staff knowing that we had solar panels on City Hall, that the likelihood of eventually putting solar pans, panels on both those buildings was going to happen. Did anybody see the future and do electrical work in the design of the Public Works Building and the PD Building? Was anything, do you remember going through all the designs with the architect and the electricians and so on? Did anyone bring up solar panels?
I, I know we discussed solar panels during some of the design. I don't know what was in, I mean, because they will do all the work similar to what they did with this building. They will do all the work to put in the inverters and everything like that. That's part of the, what they'll be putting together.
It's just a lot easier when the wiring is already done.
Yeah, I, I don't think we've made a space for them already. I don't think that, I don't think that actually happened.
Because personally, I was, I was surprised when we spent eight, close to eight million dollars for these two facilities, that we didn't also have solar panels going up. So when everything was done and I didn't see solar panels, I was like, wow. Let's see. Next question is, did anybody look at the roofing stability for the weight of the solar panels?
I mean, they came out and looked at all, but they spent some time out here looking at the roofs and looking at the orientation of the roofs and, and I would say that given that the police department and public works is built out of steel versus this building, which is out of wood, we should be absolutely fine.
Okay. Uh, let's see. And they are requested to take detailed roof characteristic pictures before and after installation. And that way to ensure the condition of the roof before and after, ensure the roof is structurally withstand additional weight, ensure the roof penetrations do not void roof warranties. Now, I'm speaking from experience. I just want you to know that as soon as roofing companies look for every angle possible.
Oh, yeah.
To where they don't have to warrant the job. So as soon as you put a penetration in, and if it's not sealed with their recommended sealant and so on, they won't warrant the roof. So we want to make sure that whoever is checking on them, we, we want to trust them, but trust me that you can't trust vendors. You have to constantly go behind them and check everything.
And, and, yeah, we'll double check on making sure that they're putting up whatever sealer needs to be happening. But given that they're attaching to metal roofs, a lot of times it's clamps and clips versus, versus actual penetrations. There's fewer penetrations on a metal roof than on a traditional asphalt roof.
Good. Okay. And then it also mentions that spare parts should be provided if there is a projected need. Now, who decides if there's a projected need? Myself, if I was the purchasing agent and responsible for the city, I would make sure I had some extra parts.
So we've never had to do, uh, have a lot of spare parts for this building and, um, the only thing that's not working on this building right now is the thing that interfaces with the computer. And even if we had brought a spare part, I mean, chances are we'd probably need a new design at this point in time. Because nowadays that they don't make the plugs that go for them anymore. So, so, um, and this one's been, what, ten, almost ten years or so that we've been here, thirteen years? So I, I don't think we're going to need a lot of spare parts. And with, if we can't keep up with the maintenance, I think that chance is even less.
Okay. Yeah, and then you have to store the spare parts. I know both sides of the story.
Yeah.
Then, uh, one of the statements was that you hope to have the installation done by the end of June. Were you talking end of June next year?
Oh, no, no, no. That's, that, it's the end of January. It should be January.
End of January. Okay.
Well, actually, it should be the end of this year that they have it done. I think they can move pretty quickly. They're, they're ready to go.
So this is January twenty twenty-four or December twenty twenty-three, correct?
Hopefully it's December of twenty twenty-three.
And it also stated in the paperwork that they were going to, the design will be completed and presented to the city for final approval by the city. So my question there was who is the city? Who approved the design and are, is council the city or is staff the city?
Well, I think that they've already kind of provided what the layout would be on the different buildings, so we kind of already know what that is. So when council approves this today, that would be generally the, the general layout of what the structures would look like on the roofs.
Generally, a, a project this, this expensive, usually we have them come and present to council and then we are informed as to what the project is where and we can ask questions to the vendor. That hasn't happened on this project.
I mean, we don't bring most of our contractors in. Like when we did the road project, I don't think the contractor came in and talked to you guys.
Kind of hard to bring a road in here, but.
Yeah, or, or the listation. I don't think we've brought vendors in, in, anytime recently. I think when we are in the planning stages of a project, for example, like we'll, we'll, you know, we'll have definitely people doing presentations and stuff like that, but I don't remember, I mean, it's been a long time since we did the solar project, but I'm not sure.
Because I would have sure enjoyed learning, but thank you.
Yeah, the one time that we, we did that, it was, it was the IT.
Yeah.
Group and that was a, a little awkward and. Council, other questions, comments on this item? And Councilor Rosengard, I appreciate all your diligence and looking at this. It is a big project and, um, I want to make sure that it's done right so that we don't have any issues later down the line where we have to work with another vendor to, you know, initiate something. Councilor Young.
Oh, your mic, yeah. Sorry, there we go. Uh, make a motion that we approve the award, award of a contract to Texas Solar Outfitters for solar, solar photovoltaic installation on the police department and public works department facilities.
And I think we want to add that it is.
Contingent on.
The rebates.
From Austin Electric.
Austin Energy, yeah. Is there a second?
I'll second. Okay.
Further discussion on this item? Any members of the public who should speak to this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes. Thank you, council. I appreciate, um, the, the consideration of that. And thank you, staff, for working with us. I'm looking forward to getting this done before the end of the year. Council, that takes us to our last two agenda items. Um, these two, I would like us to, we, we have an executive item for number nineteen. Oh, sorry.
Sixteen is a variance, so I didn't put it on consent because it's a variance.
I remember sixteen. Um, consider an act on approval of a request from the Sunset Valley Elementary School PTA for a variance from section one fifty dot seven two six B and section one fifty dot seven two seven A of the land development code to allow a banner not attached to a building as well as a banner that is up for more than three days. And consideration to waive all associated fees for council variance and sign application. And Councilor Rosengard, you want to speak to this?
I move to approve with the four findings.
All right. So a motion to approve with the four findings that are included in the backup. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on this?
This is a routine item, just everybody knows, every year we do this.
But we have the findings as part of the variance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. So council, now we have the last two items. Um, we do have an executive session item for item number nineteen, and I would like to also meet quickly an executive session for item number eighteen. But we can have one single executive session to cover both of these. So if I could get a motion to move into executive session so we can cover, um, discussion on consult, consultation with legal on item number eighteen and, um, discussion of, uh, the consult with legal on item number nineteen as well for the city facility project.
Motion to move in executive session.
Is there a second? All right. All those in favor moving to executive session, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So we're moving into executive session at eight twenty-four. We're not going to take any action in executive session. It'll be done in open session and we'll reconvene once we're done.
Session. Council, we're going to pick up on Agenda Number 18, which is presentation discussion and possible action on approval of a resolution authorizing the construction of a water line from Oakdale Drive south on Brody Lane for the benefit of 6401 and 6405 Brody Lane and authorizing city staff to prepare for an assessment under Title 13, subtitle A, section 552, subchapter D of the Texas Local Government Code. And so we have a copy of the proposed resolution in our backup, and at this time, council, we can either take a motion or go into discussion.
So move.
You want to move to approve the resolution?
To approve.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second? All right, any discussion on this item?
Yep.
And just as a reminder, we're approving the resolution, which will start the process for us to bring back an ordinance on October 17th to forward the assessment itself. And so the resolution is just letting council and staff move in that direction and prepare all the notices. All those in favor of approving the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, the motion was approved, and thank you for waiting all night for that.
I am sorry.
Council, we do not need to take any action on Agenda Number 19, so at this time, Councilmember Medikus?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned at 8:57 PM. Good work tonight.[1778.30][1778.30]♪